Good evening, welcome to City Council meeting for April 27th, 2021. Again, we are starting a little bit late because of the length of our redevelopment agency meeting prior to this meeting. This meeting is being conducted in accordance with emergency directives from Governor Sisalak. Therefore, in-person attendance is limited for this meeting. Public comment may have been submitted prior to the meeting via email or voicemail. We will also provide for a period during the public comment where people may call in with their comments. Items listed on the agenda may be taken out of order. Two or more agenda items for consideration may be combined, and any item on the agenda may be removed or related discussion may be delayed at any time. With that, I will call the meeting to order, and we will begin tonight with the invocation, Pastor Kurt Hedlund. Please rise.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this small city in which we live as we read and see about riots and protests and rising crime rates and other municipalities across the country. We're reminded of the benefits of living here in Boulder City. We do pray for our law enforcement agencies which are under attack. We realize there are occasional bad officers, but the vast majority of men and women who serve in our law enforcement agencies are people desiring to serve the community. So pray that our politicians and local bodies would find ways of retaining good officers and encouraging good people to be recruited and to serve in law enforcement. We pray for this meeting tonight. We pray that there would be a spirit of wisdom that would prevail. We think especially of choices that need to be made in regard to a new city manager. May objectivity and insight to prevail in that choice. We're thankful for our new city attorney. May you bless her and give her insight and tact and diplomacy and dealing with other government officials and dealing with the public. We remember we have another election coming up in six weeks, and we pray that the citizenry would tune in, make wise choices of another city council member, that they would have insight into the ballot questions before them. So we are also thankful for all the volunteers that serve in local government and the various boards without pay, and for the spirit of volunteerism in this community. So we ask that you would sovereignly guide the decisions that are made tonight, and I pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor. We will now have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, Pastor Hedlund, thank you. We've been able to resume our invocations. I very much appreciate your words. Thank you. Madam City Clerk, were there any public announcements?
No public announcements.
Thank you. We will open the initial public comment period then. Public comment during this period is limited to items on the agenda. Speakers have up to five minutes to speak, and as always, we ask people be civil and concise in their comments. Is there anyone here in council chambers that would like to speak in public comment? All right, we will invite anyone wishing to call in. This is the initial public comment period for the City Council meeting. Madam City Clerk, were there any emails or voicemails received?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have three.
Please go ahead.
First public comment is from Sharon Newby regarding agenda item number eight. Dear City Council, I am writing in support of Chris Estrella for the position of Boulder City City Clerk. Mr. Estrella has a master's in business administration. He is currently the clerk treasurer for a small town in Wisconsin. Mr. Estrella has 16 years' experience working with towns in Wisconsin. He has a wide breadth of knowledge evidenced by his resume. Elected the president of the Wisconsin Municipal Clerks Association provided much opportunity for him to broaden his skills. He holds the highest level certification possible with Wisconsin Municipal Clerks Association. Professional development is evident by his many trainings. He does make a mistake in his letter, which I'm sure he will explain. He lists among his many strengths as his ability to foster a positive environment and collaboration with all departments. All of these qualities make him an excellent city clerk for Boulder City. I think he would be a fresh face to join the new other members of the City Hall team. Thank you. Second written comment was also submitted by Sharon Newby regarding agenda item number seven. This is a comment for agenda item number seven, Parks and Rec Committee member. I support Dr. Valerie McVeigh for the Parks and Rec Committee. Dr. Val has participated in probably every activity offered for adults in Parks and Recreation Department. She line dances, tap dances, plays pickleball, does hip hop, and swims laps for health and fundraising. She would be an excellent committee member with her knowledge of the Parks and Rec Department. Thank you. Third public comment was submitted by Amelia Gross. Good evening, City Council. I would like to introduce myself. My name is Amelia Gross, and I have applied to be part of the Parks and Recreation Committee. I moved to Boulder City almost 10 years ago. My husband and I want to raise our children in this fabulous small community. We love the small-town atmosphere, caring people, and community activities. Throughout my life, I have been an active individual. I grew up playing multiple sports and continued to play sports in college, intramural, and recreational as an adult. I like to contribute to my children's activities and help out throughout the community. I have coached youth sports, assisted with Cub Scout activities and camps, volunteered in Vacation Bible School as an adult leader, volunteered at my kids' school, and continue to help out in the community with trash cleanup and other opportunities when presented. The reason I am interested in serving on the Parks and Rec Committee is that I care about our little town. I like to find ways to make things more efficient, cost-saving, or beneficial to our community. One of my strengths or weaknesses is that I have a great attention to detail. I find items that might need attention and could help support solutions rather than just complain about the problems. I understand budgets and funding through previous management experience in the hospitality business and would be honored to be considered for this committee. Thank you all for your time and consideration. And that's all I have for written public comments.
Thank you. All right, hearing no one for public comment, then we will close the initial public comment period and move to approval of the regular agenda. Madam City Clerk, any changes?
No changes.
Madam City Attorney?
No changes.
And Mr. City Manager?
No changes.
Thank you. Bring it to council then. Anyone wishing to make changes on the regular agenda?
No changes.
Anyone wishing to make a motion for approval then?
I move to approve the regular agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we'll move to the consent agenda. Again, Madam City Clerk, any changes?
No changes.
Madam City Attorney?
Yes, Mayor. In light of the RDA decision to not move forward on Resolution 230, item number two is no longer necessary. I'd recommend removal of item two.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager?
No further changes.
Thank you. Any other changes by council members? All right, I will move then that the consent agenda be accepted with the removal of item number two.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We'll begin then with item number six for possible action, Resolution 7273 approving the purchase of a new emergency medical transport. Do we have Chief Gray here, or... There he is. Good evening.
So this agenda item is for Resolution 7273 is for the purchase of a new ambulance. You recall, we brought this forward last July, and at the time was decided to hold off on it. The ambulance was approved in fiscal year 2020's verf. It's to replace a 2000 International. I did some research after the last meeting and to look at replacements and things like that. The National Fire Protection Association is really clear on fire engines, but when it comes to ambulances, it's a little bit more vague. And so there was a range. Typically, it's four to seven years is what they say to replace them. Some other places say eight years or 100,000 miles. I even found one that you could go as far as 14 years, but that was the furthest I found. This current unit is 21 years old. And one of the concerns they talked about is once you get past certain safety improvements, which typically every five years, the National Fire Protection Association comes out with new safety improvements, and they say after you've been through two of those cycles, you should be considering replacing your equipment. We're actually through four of them. Another significant change happened between 2010 and 2015. NIOSH, which is the National Institute of Occupational Health and Safety, did crash test studies on ambulances. They'd never done them before. They only did them on cars. And so they did a five-years' worth of studies, and now there's more safety features specifically for ambulances, which is significant because there's about 4,500 ambulance accidents a year. We've been fortunate not to have one. But so they looked at things like not just the vehicle, but the box with the patient compartment, how the patient is strapped in. So all those improvements have been added in. So those are all things that are important to consider. Another consideration is as of July last year, we've had 96.8 days where we've had at least one of our ambulances out of service. And so we need to keep three in service at all times. So we have two that are frontline that always are on duty, and then when the two of those are out of town or we have an event, we have the third one put in service. So we really need to keep three in service. And so those are all important considerations, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Hoskins?
Yes, thank you, Chief. We talked about this yesterday in our briefing, and I asked you if this was the vehicle that needed the clutch and the springs, and you said yes.
Yes, ma'am.
And then you gave us some more information that I thought that the public would be interested in as to what will happen to this vehicle. If you would please give us some information on that. Thank you.
One of the options, and it's something we want to consider going forward with the newer ambulances, is you can have them re-chassis, you can reuse them. This one's old enough that it wouldn't be beneficial, but we have been... Police departments reached out and asked if they could use it for a special operations vehicle for some of their training and some of their equipment and stuff they need. We've also considered using it as a rehab vehicle. So something when we have fires that we could, you know, with our temperature getting so hot, it's important when they're going in and out of fires and coming out of that extreme heat that they have a place to go and get their bottles refilled and, you know, cool off and have their vitals checked. And so this would be an option to use it that way. It just wouldn't be used for emergency transportation anymore. But the re-chassis option is something we really want to look at going forward. There's a company that's just in Las Vegas area that can, instead of buying a brand-new vehicle, could take the existing one, take the box off, put a new chassis under it, put it back on there, redo some stuff at significant savings. This vehicle here, because of the way it's made, it wouldn't... We wouldn't be able to probably do it that way. We definitely wouldn't get the savings. It's such a... So much bigger vehicle, we'd need a much larger chassis, which would have us spending probably more money than we're spending now, so...
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Anyone wishing to make a motion then?
Oh, I'd like to make a motion to accept Resolution number 7273.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Chief Gray, thanks very much.
Thanks for the support.
Item number seven for possible action, appointment to the Parks and Recreation Commission. We have Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Member Tom Tyler resigned his position, so we need one appointment to fill an unexpired term ending January 4th, 2024. You have applications that were included in the packet, but one applicant, Shawna Redd, asked to not be considered for this position tonight.
Thank you. With that, I will open nominations for the one person for Parks and Recreation Committee. Councilmember Hoskins?
Yes, I would like to nominate Dr. McNay.
Other nominations. Councilmember Folda?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to nominate Amelia Gross, please.
Any other names? All right, we will then... I will move to close nominations.
I'll second.
All those in favor of closing nominations?
Aye.
And then we will take Valerie McNay first. All those members in favor of Valerie McNay, please raise your hand. Those are three, then that's a majority, and I believe we do not then need to go forward with the second name. All right, so Valerie McNay then is appointed to the Parks and Recreation Commission... Committee, sorry. Item number eight for possible action, matters pertaining to the city clerk position. Mr. Bolt?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and Bryce Bolt, Minister of Services Director. And you do have before you for possible actions are matters pertaining to the city clerk position, and I'm seeking direction relative to the next steps in the selection process and present five qualified candidates. We had 17 applicants who applied, and I bring the five most qualified for your consideration. Just seeking where you want to go from here.
Thank you, Mr. Bolt. Again, we're looking for next steps in this process. Could you briefly describe to us what has already occurred?
The position was announced on April 23rd, I'm sorry, on March 23rd, and was open until April 23rd. It was advertised in a number of different publications, professional trades, associations with professional municipal clerks on nationwide basis, and then also on some public sector recruitment websites. And I'm sorry, I could go on with respect to the... We then evaluated the applications, determined the five most qualified candidates, and with respect to that, I did seek assistance just with regard to what's important for a city clerk from the city clerk of Las Vegas who shared some very good information on things that are valuable for the city clerk position.
So the... What I'm getting at, and I think what you've said, but we did have a pool of candidates, and that pool was reviewed regarding qualifications, and that's where we're at now is with the five candidates that are listed in the packet.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any other questions or comments regarding where we're at with the process Based on the process that is being used for other positions, it would appear to me that where we're at now then, the next step is to schedule interviews with those five candidates that have been identified?
Yes, sir.
Any other comments or suggestions regarding that? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you. I was just curious if we... If we were all, you know, pleased with the five candidates that came forward, if we wanted to move all five forward for following interviews, if we feel that's the best, or if, you know, we wanted to narrow that down some? I'm open to either, but I just wanted to have that discussion.
Yeah, I think the way we have this agendized is we're looking for the next step, not necessarily that, and then B is the presentation of the candidates, I think would be more appropriate to make that determination. All right, I will make a motion then that the next step in the process will be to arrange for interviews of the candidates, whether that be via video. That's probably going to be the most practical at this point.
Yes, sir. I think the same similar fashion is what we did for the city manager and city attorney.
Thank you. All right, anyone wishing to second that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, now we'll move on to B then of this item, presentation of candidates. And again, we do have the five candidates listed. Information regarding their resumes is present. Anyone wishing to make comment on that? Councilmember Adams?
Well, in reviewing some of these candidates, you know, there certainly are a lot of qualified, some rose to the top. Obviously, our acting city clerk has tremendous qualifications, and I think she certainly needs to continue on in this process. And looking at some of the other candidates, you know, I do have some concerns. It's not that I don't think that they couldn't be caught up, but some of those who come from out of state, you know, I wonder if there's not a, you know, there's going to be some catch-up, and I think it's important that we have somebody in this position, given the transition, that we have somebody who's very familiar with Nevada open meeting law and the way in which the position is held here in Nevada. So that's my overall preference right now, but I will say that, you know, I guess those are my comments right now at this time.
Questions or comments from others? Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I had the same experience. I do have a couple that seem to have come to the top, and I'm not necessarily convinced that all five need to be interviewed, but what may happen is the top two I pick are not the same top two that others pick, but I know that there are several I'd be interested in interviewing, but not necessarily all five. And I don't know if there's a weeding out process now, or if it's just best to talk to all five.
Anyone else? You know, I believe that, you know, we've seen the process. Each of us, I think, is going to be having different priorities, different emphasis. I believe we're too early in the process to be making that decision and would much prefer to speak with each of these candidates, have an opportunity to ask them questions, and see, you know, to evaluate it based on their responses rather than just the resumes. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
I'll just say that I think that is appropriate. I know that my opinion from what I saw in the paper versus, you know, what came to us at interviews certainly has altered, you know, some of my thoughts and other things. So I think it's appropriate to move forward. Five people is not too much to interview, and I think it'll help us really determine the best option moving forward.
Anyone else? Did you want to make a motion based on that?
Could I say so moved, or would you like it worded better?
All right, I will second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that brings us then to C, City Council Direction regarding city clerk candidates. I'm not sure what else we may need, but we did talk about the fact that getting questions together as to how we should do that. For the other positions, we've had some questions suggested to us, and each member was then encouraged to submit questions of their own. Is that a process that you would prefer?
We could certainly follow that same process, and I can solicit the questions from you, and I can format them, and then with a evaluation sheet, which will probably look familiar, and then send that back out to council for your comments relative to the questions and the scoring prior to the interviews.
All right, any other questions or comments regarding the process? Councilmember Hoskins?
Just don't ask questions about spinning plates.
Good. Well, I'll send out an email tomorrow and ask for questions, and then we'll get those together, and then we can start polling as to when a good date might be too.
Okay, and I guess that would be my other concern about this is, you know, where are we at and what type of expectation do we have for our next step if the next step is going to be the interviews themselves? Again, we have discussed that doing these as special meetings because of all of the other items that we tend to have on our regular council meetings. Again, that would be my preference that we... I will call a special meeting once we have an idea of when that can be scheduled. All right, I will make the motion then that Mr. Bolt will provide some suggested questions to us. Councilmembers may submit questions of their own, and that we will then look for an opportunity to schedule a special meeting for the interview of the candidates.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anything else we need, Mr. Bolt, at this time?
I think that'll do it for now, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move then to item number nine, City Managers' Report. Mr. City Manager?
Nothing unusual to report.
Well, I beg to differ. There are differences now in some of the formats of the reports, and again, I think, you know, after going through those in my briefing with the finance director, these are all good things. These are things that are providing more clarity. Any other comments, questions on the City Managers' Report? Councilmember Hoskins?
Yes, as I said in my briefing yesterday, I think it's very, very nice that this is all spread out and itemized, and I think it will be much easier for council to be able to follow it. So I think everyone who had input into that.
Other questions or comments? All right then, we will move to item number 10, public comment. This is our final public comment period. Comment during this portion of the meeting may be on any issue. Again, speakers will have up to five minutes to speak, and as always, please be civil and concise in your comments. Anyone in chambers that would like to speak during public comment? All right, we will then take calls. Anyone wishing to call in our final public comment? The phone number is 702-589-9629. The phone number 702-589-9629. Madam City Clerk, were there any emails or voicemails?
No further comments.
Thank you. Again, this is our final public comment period. The phone number 702-589-9629. All right, hearing no one for the final public comment period, I will close the comments and we will move to our last item, city council reports. I believe we'll start with Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to say that we did have a Nevada League of Cities meeting just recently. Like just about every other board, we were discussing the current legislation going on. One concern was raised particularly around the potential for cannabis lounges and for outdoor or public, public event use of cannabis. Of course, in a group like Nevada League of Cities, there are a lot of different communities with different thoughts on, on, on these types of things. The motion that was made was that essentially what we would support is retaining control, that local authority should, should be maintained on, on instances like this, that, that the communities are best to decide what is and is not appropriate for their community so that, you know, that's at least what we're, what we're hoping for in, with regards to moving forward and that, that will be understood, that, you know, any types of language that, that might allow for this, this type of activity should really be, stay within the realm of the municipal control. Secondly, we had our Board of Health meeting last week. You know, the issue that we are, how I have now is that our supply of the vaccine is now excess to our, our demand for it. That means that some clinics are closing. The Cashman Center will be folding in with our efforts at the Las Vegas, the LVCVA. You know, as these starts, as these types of things, you know, as people are not going out to getting their vaccine, you know, we cannot maintain the staffing and everything that is needed to provide all of the, that is, what is necessary to run a vaccine clinic. So I just want to let everyone out there know that if you are eligible for this vaccine and right now just about everybody is, please, please get it. You, you do not understand the, the effects and until you have seen it, just, just what, just what is at risk. So please, for the benefit of not just your own health, but the health of your community, I, I just ask that you please go out there and get vaccinated. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bridges?
Thank you. A couple of things. First of all, I attended the Polpak Board Meeting and all is well, finances are good. That's pretty much what it was, was four hours of spreadsheets and it, it all looked very impressive and everybody seemed very optimistic about the finances. Emergency aid, utilities, food, always available. Residents of Boulder City, there's no reason why you shouldn't have enough money or get the assistance you need and especially specifically with COVID or any other emergency to be able to get assistance with rent, utilities and take advantage of the food, food program. A couple of personal things I was involved with was getting an opportunity to walk the town a bit with somebody with accessibility's needs and understand what the bubs and the yellow crosswalks are and the need for those to line up. And so we had a very interesting meeting today with Public Works Director and a gentleman who's very interesting and interested in working with the clock in front of the hotel. It looks like things are going to work out between the city and him and him getting to stay involved in that process. So, oh, and finally, a board meeting this afternoon with the Southern Nevada Regional Planning Coalition and everything is pretty much status quo. So that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Hoskins?
Nothing to report, thank you.
Councilmember Folda?
No report, thank you.
Thank you. I received today what's called the executive summary from the Las Vegas Convention and Visitors Authority and that's kind of a, a real quick look at the finances for the Convention and Visitors Authority where they also report revenue from room rent, visitors to McCarran, all those types of things. And it's encouraging. We're starting to see some of those numbers increase, not only month over month, but even over last year, they're showing positive increases. It's still nowhere near where it was prior to the pandemic, but you know, the trajectory now is going up instead of down. And I think as Councilmember Adams had said earlier, you know, one of the things that is most important, I believe, in this process is for people to get vaccinated. And I do understand people have concerns about that. We certainly just went through a period with the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine where problems were identified with that, primarily here in Boulder City. It's been the Moderna vaccine that's been used. It does require two shots, but there have been no concerns that I'm aware of that have been reported with that, other than people may feel a little unwell for a day or two after receiving usually the second vaccine. You know, I think it's important too to point out that, you know, President Trump received this vaccine very early in the process, just about the time that the vaccine was made available. He took the jab. Other officials have taken the jab. I've taken the jab, both of them now. I, I really think that people who are hesitant about this, and again, there's no requirement for people to, to receive this, but please take a look at what the science is on this. The plan that we are under right now, the guidelines are now at the county level. So it's no longer the state level, it's now the county level. And one of the things that's been identified in that is to allow for our economy, our stores, our restaurants, our businesses to continue to open up. We've gone to 80% occupancy now. It's set at a level of the population who receives the vaccine and that, that level is at 60%. You know, we're approaching that number right now, but as Councilmember Adams has said, the demand has fallen off quite a bit for people wanting to get it. Please take a look at the science. You know, talk to your doctor, talk to your healthcare provider if you have concerns about it, but it is the way we are going to get out of this. I'm convinced of that. So let's keep each other healthy, let's get this over with as quickly as we can. And with that, we're adjourned. Thank you all very much.